I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask a moment of silence tonight for Vitale Zilka, who's a firefighter over in Sergeant Bluff, who passed away, as well as Rick Shorg, the mayor of Lawton. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you, and welcome to tonight's meeting. Supervisor Claussen reminded me, have a timely reminder that if you have a cellphone with you, please turn it off, and so I'm going to take the hint and make sure that my devices are off. So, thank you, and welcome to tonight's meeting. First item on the agenda, citizen concerns. Are there any concerned citizens who would like to approach the board and have their voices heard? Hearing none, we'll move the approval of the agenda dated August 2nd, 2016. I'll move that.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item four is approval of the minutes of the July 26th, 2016 meeting.
Move it. Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
I abstain.
The motion carries four to zero with one abstention.
I will move the ministry to approve the minutes of July 28th, 2016 for a town hall meeting in Christian Island.
I will second that, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the minutes are approved.
I'll move August 1st.
Four to zero with one abstention.
I abstain too, I wasn't there either.
With two, I'm sorry, with two abstentions, so three to zero, those minutes stand approved.
I'd move August 1st, town hall meeting in Smithland.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
I abstain.
And with one abstention, the minutes are approved of the August 1st meeting on a vote of four to zero with one abstention. And now, we are to item number five, which is the discussion and approval of the claims.
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, is there discussion on the claims? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the claims are approved, five to zero. I believe that we're close to 4:35 PM set time. This is a public hearing, and sale of property parcel number 617-250, also known as 24 Second South Street, excuse me. And so we are now in a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the sale of this property?
Hearing none, I move the public hearing be closed.
There's a motion, there's a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Now, we are to asking if there is anyone who would like to bid on the sale of this property. It is a direct sale. I saw that look in Heather's eye, for a minimum bid of $114.
Move a direct sale of the city of McAllen.
I'll second that, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. The next item is a public hearing and sale of property parcel number 132-525, also known as 113 George Street. We will now enter a public hearing on the sale of this property. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against the sale of this property?
Chairman, hearing none, move the hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. The public hearing now being closed, we would entertain if anyone would like to bid on the sale of this property, and just to be clear, this is 113 George Street. So is there anyone who would like to approach? Thanks for being here tonight. If you'd state your name and address, and then what your bid would be.
Thank you, Trinidad Orozco. Current address is 121 Rebecca Street.
Okay.
And bid is 108.
Okay. Thank you very much. $108, is there anyone else who would like to bid on this property? Again, 113 George Street.
Chairman, I would move that we sell the property to Trinidad Orozco.
We have a motion, we have a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Heather will help you out, and she is looking at you from the second row. Thank you very much. I mean, dispensed with items 7A and B. Item C is a public hearing and sale of property parcel number 062715. This property is also known as 1219 21st Street. We're now in a public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the sale of this property? Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Now, we will entertain, anyone who would like to?
Bid on the sale of?
1219 21st Street, the minimum bid is $227. Welcome ma'am, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. Would you state your name and current address, please?
Itania Gonzalez, 1215 21st Street.
Itali?
Itania.
Itania.
Itania, yes.
Nice name. Thank you very much, and what is your bid?
The $227.
$227. Is there anyone else who would like to bid on the sale of this property? Hearing none, I would move that the property be sold to Itania Gonzalez, if I said that correctly? Supervisor Claussen, please.
Who's name do you want this in? Yours?
My name, yes.
So I believe I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, and you'll again see Heather. Item D is the public hearing and sale of property parcel number 062700. This is also known as 1223 21st Street. We are now in a public hearing, is there anybody who would like to speak for or against the sale of this property?
Chairman, hearing none.
We have a motion, we have a second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Now, we are to bidding on this property. Again, this is 1223 21st Street, and the minimum bid on this property is $227. Is there anyone who would like to bid on this particular property? If you'll please come forward, thanks for being here, state your name and current address.
I'm interpreting for my mom.
Okay.
Rosa Diaz, Miguel Para and Rosa Para, and their current address is 1225 21st Street.
She said Rosa Diaz?
Rosa Para and Miguel Para.
Rosa Para and Miguel Para?
Yeah.
Okay, and your minimum bid?
The $227.
$227. Is there anyone else who would like to bid on the sale of this property? Please come forward, and again, state your name and what you would like your bid
The bid is $227, right?
Right.
$300.
$300. Is there anyone else who would like to bid or rebid on the sale of this property? And you both can stay up here, as much exercise as it may be to go back and forth.
Um, $400?
$400.
$450?
$450. $500.
$550.
$550. The supervisor thing doesn't work out, maybe I can get into the auctioneering thing. So $550 is the current bid.
$600.
$600?
$650.
$650. $700.
$800.
$800.
She's my neighbor, isn't she?
You all can work that out.
Okay, she can have her. We're not going to put up.
Okay. Very good, that's good to hear. So I would move that the property be sold to Rosa Para and Miguel Para in a sale amount of $800. Everybody's on the same page? Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Heather, thanks for being here, and she will get you taken care of. Good ending to the story. Item eight, human resources with our directorate. I'm sorry, thank you very much. Before that, we were out of order because of the set times and did not want to miss. Item six, A and B. Item A is approval of resolution thanking and commending an individual, Rosemary Journey, for her service to Woodbury County, and this will be made formally, or presented later if it stands to be approved today. But Rosemary Journey has demonstrated herself to be an outstanding citizen of Woodbury County. She's a volunteer with the Soulan Area Chapter of the American Red Cross, serving 13 counties in Northwest Iowa, Nebraska, and South Dakota. She's been a volunteer for more than 40 years, and she's really a critical link between families, who are often, military families, who are often at that moment of crisis, maybe the notification of an emergency, sometimes it's bad news accompanied with that, and she's given approximately 300 messages, including two in my own family. So she has just done an outstanding job attending military funerals and so on, and so with that, I would ask to move approval of the resolution thanking and commending Rosemary Journey for her service to Woodbury County.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the resolution is approved, five to zero. The next one's also another bit of good news, this is a resolution commemorating the 50th anniversary of Western Iowa Tech Community College, and just some highlights, and again, this will be presented a later date, but the 61st General Assembly passed legislation bipartisan basis in 1965 to establish community colleges, and Western Iowa Tech has been a great mover and shaker in our community, and one of the real educational backbones for the last 50 years in providing post-secondary education, career technical education literacy and so on, and really an economic development tool in our area. And they have a great collaborative relationship with the county, and our Joint Emergency Operations Center, 911 Communications, and it has a great mission of providing quality education. So, we would like to, as a board, I would move approval of this resolution and ask for a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. I will pass these around, and if we can all use the same pen, it'll look uniform. All right, having dispensed with those items, now we are back on track, thank you, Mr. Claussen, to item eight, human resources with Director Gilliland. Item A is approval of the memorandum of personnel transaction. Well, second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item B is authorize the chairman to sign authorization to initiate the hiring process.
Move it.
A motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item C, approval and authorization of the chairman to sign nationwide deferred compensation contract. Ed, do you wish to speak on this item?
Yes, the nationwide contract is one that we had had before the board, and we had approved moving to the new nationwide contract that provided much lower fees to our employees, was approved by ISAC, been thoroughly vetted by ISAC, and this is just the formal signing process to continue to move forward and begin the employee education.
I will move that, if there's a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item D is approval and authorization of chairman to sign a letter of engagement to allow a forensic investigation of the cyber attack of July 20th, 2016. We'll ask for some remarks, Ed, before that. I just want to thank WCICC and their leadership, responded to numerous media requests today, and just know the scope of what we have, are millions and millions and millions of files, and 3,700 approximately were able to be, have something put on them in encryption, and I think they did an outstanding job, nearly instantaneously, taking proactive measures. So, want to thank them first and foremost for what could have been something much, much worse.
Yes, we got by very, very lucky. We've had the forensic experts look at it initially, now this is just the formal letter of engagement to allow them to continue their work, finalize it, to provide us with a letter of opinion about any potential damages. They tell me that, from what they've seen so far, and what's been provided them by WCICC, that they view that it as less than 1% chance that we have any issues. They think that everything's fine, that all of the, all of the files, they were just encrypted, there was nothing else done with them.
Very good, is there discussion? I will move that.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thanks for your work on that. Also want to commend Ed, because Ed has a background in risk management, and we took some action, I don't know if anybody remembers this, but last year, on capping some liabilities and having some proactive things in place, and sure enough, here we are now, so.
Pass for the.
Right? Very good. Item nine, Veterans Affairs, Danielle Dempster, this is approval of appointment of John Mansfield to the Commission of Veteran Affairs. I will second that, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. I understand that Mr. Mansfield is otherwise engaged in the Veterans Committee tonight, but retired Colonel of the Army Reserves and Vietnam veteran, has done some extensive volunteering, and we thank him not only for his past service, but continued service. Glenn?
Glenn Setevy, 911 Communication Center for Woodbury County, here to, this evening, and representing Starcom. Starcom Executive Board is in negotiation with King Street Wireless on some tower leasing of our east tower, which we call our, it's our Brian site, it's east of Anthem, and they want to install some wireless technology on this site. It will help offset the Starcom operating budget. The Starcom Executive Board is making a recommendation that this board give the chairman authorization to sign the lease agreement with King Street Wireless.
Move it.
We have a motion by Supervisor Smith, second by Supervisor Monson, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Glenn. Item 11, emergency services, Don Zanley. We have 2016 Missouri River Historical Development Special Grant, there's approval to apply for and administer that grant on behalf of the Woodbury County EMS Association, and what are we applying for? Do we have it in our backup, for the good of the public, and because you speak eloquently about it?
That, uh, public grant would be for, we'd ask for 183,000 to purchase 14 Lucas chess compression systems, and that's helping with automated CPR, and the ESO software, which allows the, all the squads in Woodbury County to use the DC-10 codes, which are new requirements at the state by the end of the year, where they would be able to still charge their patients, and that would be able to collect all the information, and then six pack of tablets to put in the rigs and the ambulances for those squads to be able to all collect their data and provide their reports to the hospital and some things, so.
Doing CPR is hard work, isn't it?
It's hard work.
It's tiring, right?
Yeah.
And these assist in?
They, they are pretty cool. They, we just got trained on them, they had the six that got from the Hemsley Trust, and they're pretty amazing. I mean, pretty much they're like, your biggest job you have is just to make sure it doesn't stop and battery doesn't go dead. It's just, I mean, it's amazing, and people are actually coming back, being revived while they're inside the machine, so. Pretty amazing.
Well, I will move this item.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, Don. Item 12, secondary roads with our county engineer, Mark Darno, this is a consideration of award of bid for project LBL 212-73-97. Mark?
Good afternoon, Mark Darno, Woodbury County Engineer. Recommend award of the bid to Dixon Construction, the low, Dixon Construction, the low bidder on the project.
Move it. Second.
That's as short as you've ever been, Mark.
Trying hard tonight, so.
Must have a date.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero.
A lesson, but that's where I'm headed next, so. Thank you.
All right, well, good luck, thank you. Item 13, Building Services, Kenny Schmitz and myself, this is, item A is to approve the law enforcement center expansion up to 1.199 million dollars. Last week, we had a robust discussion, informationally, on all of the different aspects of this particular project, and so the information is, again, in front of you. We do have with us Brian Crichton from CMBA, Kenny Schmitz, our Building Services Director, and a couple of individuals from the Baker Group, and so what I'd like to do is to have them come forward, make any introductory remarks that you think are salient or pertinent to this project, that either were not made last week, or that you would like to let the board know of, and then we'll ask for the board's input and discussion from there. So Kenny, do you want to start off?
Sure, Kenny Schmitz, Building Services. As I did state last week, we believe we've found a very good course forward at the LEC, which would be conducive to closing our Prairie Hills facility. We originally had looked at the third floor level of the LEC and an expansion thereof, and it turned out, during the timeframe, we were looking at this possibility, some other areas opened up within the facility. The clerk of courts moved to the courthouse, opening up some space, which, which allowed us to realign our thinking, and so began, began to move forward with the possibility of expanding on the second floor, and the possibility of moving some of the, shifting some of the sheriff's department around on that facility. With that said, I think we've found what appears to be a very good blending of all areas, and a good, good construction plan, a good schematic, and to that end, I'll let Brian, with CMBA Architects, talk a little bit about the schematic and answer any questions you might have related to that.
Okay, Kenny, Brian?
Good evening, everybody. Brian Crichton with Cannon Mossbrigger Architects. Does everyone have a copy of the plan? I'm not sure if anybody had any questions on that or not, but basically, we're at the end of schematic design, we've conceptually laid out space for bed expansion within the jail, in that southwest corner of second floor, and what it does is it creates the ability for the jail staff to, to have some additional segregation within their, within the unit, gives them some flexibility, and also ties it to their central control, their master control station as well, to give that line of sight observation requirement that's there. So, we're ready to move forward, if you guys would like us to, to continue to develop the plan and get a little further in depth with that, so.
So the overall's 24 beds, three attorney-client visit rooms, and a public inmate visitation area?
Correct, correct, yes. And there, I believe, let me just grab my plan in here a second, we also have handicap cell as well, just to make sure that we have that available if need be. There is some additional possibilities for some sub-day room sections of that expansion area, which allows for further segregation. There's some office space as well, right adjacent to central control, and it does, like you said, provide for some visitation space and some attorney visit rooms as well, so.
Very good. Anything that you would like to add from the Baker Group side?
Just anybody had questions?
Okay.
I'm pretty impressed between, was his name Larry?
Larry Goldberg, yes.
And Cannon Moss, they had a pretty big shoehorn to squeeze all this into one spot. It's not the end all answered, but it certainly moves us down the road a ways.
Questions, discussion?
I would move to approve, going ahead.
I'll second that, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you, gentlemen, the second item is closely related to the first, and this is to approve the closure of Prairie Hills with the subsequent move of the kitchen to the law enforcement center. This has obviously been part and parcel of the last seven, eight months of discussion, and in some of the discussion last week, which I thought was very healthy, the comment I believe was made, that may be a little too aggressive, and so we looked at a couple of things in the interim, one of which was an aggressive timeline, and some worry on those from the sheriff's office that currently utilize this area as far as training, and there's a weight room there, and some storage, both by the clerk of courts and the sheriff's office. And so, I'd like to propose that we proceed as follows, and I laid this out in the backup material. The, the motion tonight would be to signal the eventual close of Prairie Hills with the goal of turning off all utilities by July 1st of 2017, so that would be the ultimate goal. This can be accomplished, I believe, in stages, so that we most effectively both balance the sheriff's office needs with not wanting to waste any more money than we have to. And so, what we do is try, attempt to valve off the old section of the building from the new, and do you want to explain what that will do, essentially, Kenny?
What that'll essentially do for us is to keep a portion of that building open and heated, have power, keep functions going there as they currently are, or fairly close to they, as they currently are, which will allow us to buy some time to complete a kitchen renovation. which will allow us to buy some time to complete a kitchen renovation at the LEC and also look at some other avenues and possibilities on training facility and weight room and so forth.
And one of the things that I learned in doing, in this, was that December would be fairly aggressive. And even if we, if things went swimmingly, I, CBM, being in the law enforcement center and having their kitchen there, December would probably be the earliest. So that's the first and foremost reason. But then if we can still heat and maintain that area for right now and, and have that down, even though it will probably degrade the life of the boiler even more.
It, it probably will. We're, you know, looking at it basically as a, a short-term operation at that point. And, and, and moving forward, we know the equipment doesn't really have any value at this point anyway. We could be doing or having emergency repairs that might pop up if they do. That's something that we would address at that point. We're certainly hoping that we could make it on the shortened heating season that we're talking about.
Are there particular emergency repairs you could foresee that you would never recommend fixing?
Yes, one of those, one such repair is a boiler replacement, which we had already slated.
So I would ask that tonight as a board, that once we signal this, that we have the understanding that we would not make emergency boiler repairs. So that if we came to, to January, even though we're trying to make a good faith effort to heat those spaces that are currently utilized by the sheriff's office, that we understand that we're not going to put a hundred and five or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into new boilers that we know won't have a life out there.
Are there two boilers working?
There's really only one boiler that operates correctly.
The other one sort of does?
And the other one's very scary.
It'll limp along for a while and then put it out of its misery.
I, I think so.
Is it very scary, meaning it just won't turn on or something worse?
It turns on, it's reluctant to turn on, but it does turn on reluctantly and with a little apprehension on hitting the on button.
When I was looking for a timeline on the life of this, they said it could go anytime. I was reminded when I was in Vietnam and I was asking for a warranty, and the guy said warranty, and he finally understood what I said, and he said midnight. And I thought, well, that's not very long. So I kind of felt like the same answer there. The other thing I would say within this is that our intention would be, come March, April, May, to repurpose and perhaps sell the chiller. The chiller out there is not that old. I understand that it was purchased, used already, but it didn't have a whole lot of life and it's probably oversized for that area. That's something that the county could realize with, keeping with all applicable laws and so on. So just kind of want that timeline to be clear.
So basically, the motion would be to extend the life of Prairie Hills no longer than July first, two thousand seventeen, with the exception that if there is a major default in its operation, we would not make major repairs?
Right.
Correct.
We'd get a big band, box of Band-Aids.
Yes, if we could Band-Aid.
Not the Band-Aids, the motion.
I would second. Because this is all contingent on these bids coming in at one point two. If they don't, it's back to the drawing board. Keeping Prairie Hills at this.
The only caveat I would give to that is, I believe that the kitchen, irrespective of what happens, it makes sense to go into, even if we didn't do the...
Well, the kitchen, that's, that's a whole different call.
Right. And I would still, and we can always, this is a big hypothetical, discuss this, but if the LEC expansion would not be able to take place, believe that closing Prairie Hills is still a good move for the county because we don't have any utilization of that work release or weekenders or, no alternative programs have taken place there the last six months.
Well, you're right, except we are grandfathered in, that place can be used for prisons. And if this thing goes south, I'm not saying you have to go back out there, but it's a good possibility, and it's the only alternative you got.
Right. And I think for tonight, let's cross that bridge when we come to it.
Well, that's what I think.
Yeah.
If it's July one seventeen, I wouldn't be here to hassle you about it, so.
You may show up, I never know.
No, that's, that's, you'd think possible.
Larry, maybe you could come back as a citizen at that time.
I thought you were going to say consultant, but... The other thing I do, we have a motion and a second. I do want to make sure, is stated and stated publicly, the folks in law enforcement, I believe that there should be a good faith effort to utilize this time over the next few months to see ways that we can meet the sheriff's office needs as they do use this for training. And so whether that's a public-private partnership and funding, revenue from the sale of the chiller, we may be surprised and come in under bid over across the street. Would that be your experience in this current climate, Don, Brian?
Right now, there's contractors that are hungry right now, yes. Recent project in Orange City, Thursday last week, we had seven bidders, and they were all underneath the estimate, so.
So between all of those, I, I do want to state that publicly that we need to look at that because training is important, and we know that that's important to the personnel there.
I'd agree on, on the chiller and anything else that we can get any value of from. It would be good to put that into the training that is being, at this point, lost. Hopefully, gain in some other aspect, and hopefully this funding from whatever sources inside the building can be used for what the building was used for.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. Thank you for all of your work, and we'll look forward to hearing updates along the way. Item fourteen, is there rental of large classroom on the fourth floor of Trosper Hoyt to DHS, Des Moines, for targeted case management, Supervisor Monson?
I received an email late Friday afternoon before this person came on vacation, saying that they would not be requesting the use of that area. The reason is they will be expanding the public beyond that space within their culture. They have another space on Nebraska Street that they have other employees in. That is their intent to move the entire process project forward to that facility. So I would withdraw that motion of that action.
All right, having withdrawn that action on item fourteen, we're at item fifteen, and item fifteen A is the approval to expend money for live streaming to KES for Board of Supervisors meeting room. I understand this is something that the county has looked at previously, but technology and cost may have been prohibitive. But as with anything, like TVs or computers, the price goes down after a while. And I had a request actually from somebody in the media and another publicly to wonder if we could livestream. So in looking at the board area here and modernization, John Malloy and his folks, and he's making his way to the podium, looked at this a second time, and I think within a very reasonable cost, we can go live to the thousands and thousands of people who would like to watch. So John, would you just describe briefly what is entailed in doing this?
I think this is the next Pokemon Go is, is what I envision it as.
John, I'm sorry I called you up, if you...
Right, right. Newer technology, it'd be a Black Box over by Pat's area, and it will facilitate YouTube live streaming. And it's, it's basically pushing a button, and, well, there'd be some configuration by KES. And again, it would facilitate live streaming of, of this engaging, energizing board meeting that you guys have every Tuesday afternoon, so.
We tried to do this five years ago, and it was like twenty-five hundred bucks a month.
Yes, yep. How things change, as TVs and whatever computers, the example you gave, exactly. So this is a step in the right direction.
Will this be in addition to the recorded meetings on YouTube or?
I think we'll need to sit down with Pat and Brian. And I believe with the box that we're potentially purchasing, there is a recording mechanism on that box. So I don't know if, have it, what I explained to Pat is maybe a belt and suspenders approach to it. Again, we'll have to work through that, do both. If one fails, at least we have the recording. But I believe the new box does a recording as well.
I'd definitely like to see both because then you're faced with, if someone can't tune in at that particular time, they can't see the meeting, and that's, that's not an improvement if that's the case.
Right. But the device, yeah, yeah.
And we already have evidence that people are watching it after the fact.
Right.
Continue to watch it until the next meeting because it's still interesting.
That's right.
This is the total cost?
Total cost?
No monthly charges?
Correct, there's no recurring, correct. That's my understanding anyway, Larry.
Forget understanding.
Come back on July first, and you can call me on it, so.
I was looking at the city site, trying to find, it's not really easy to get to their recordings of their meetings. I had a difficult time finding them, and then it's not very well organized to get to that. So I think it's important that we continue to make it as easy as we have it now for folks to watch it after the fact.
Yep, Pat doesn't, Pat's crew does a nice job with organizing the content and posting the content.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, with that, I would, and this will fall under our current CIP, under the board modernization. So I would approve the motion to purchase live streaming equipment, including fees for labor from KES for thirteen hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, John. Item fifteen B is the discussion and action on the employee appreciation luncheon for Tuesday, August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen. This is something that Karen James is heading up and appreciating your work so far on it. And so each year, we pay for a luncheon for county and state employees to appreciate the work that they do. And I understand Supervisor Clausen has volunteered to pick up the full bill this year, which is very... So, no, in all seriousness, we really appreciate our, our employees. And so with that, I would make a motion to approve Tuesday, August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, for the employee appreciation luncheon.
Second.
Any discussion?
I will not be able to participate, but especially to the employees, I'll be there in spirit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can we get you by phone?
Would you like ketchup on your hot dog? I can just keep repeating.
All right, well, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item sixteen is a follow-up item from, an information item from last week. This is our county auditor, Pat Gill, to approve an amendment to the Board of Supervisors bylaws. Auditor Gill.
Just follow-up from last week. Amendment that was requested by Chair Person, and essentially what it does is say that any tenants, at any committee meeting, is limited to those who approved as representatives in your organizational meeting that you have each year, plus any committees that have gone after that fact, unless the meeting is posted as a special meeting for all board members.
I'll move that.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there a discussion?
Uh, yes.
Supervisor Clausen?
Mr. Auditor, you've got background, there's an ongoing issue. Is that still your contention?
Could you remind me what it said? No, I think that this just clarifies it because there was a, a meeting that you attended that brought it into question, and then one that Mr. Owen attended. It continues to be a gray area, and that's why this was requested, because amendment was requested in order to clarify that, so there wouldn't be an issue. Joshua, Assistant County Attorney, could answer any questions?
I have a question too, you know, as I read the information from the information board, I thought it still seemed pretty much of a gray area. I mean, I don't know if anyone else read it that way, but it seemed not clear-cut. So this is, I guess, what was going through my head when I was trying to sort this out. Is there anything really that prevents an elected official from going and getting information at a meeting if they're the third one, even if it is a bylaw? Sometimes I think, and I've been very respectful of the committee assignments, but it's basically you three that do all the committees. And there may come a time when, as an elected official, I just think I need firsthand information. So is there, it's not necessarily illegal to go?
Well...
I realize it's a gray area, and it may put something in jeopardy, but I may at that time decide that my commitment to my citizens are more important than the bylaw.
Well, I would hope that if there was a particular meeting that you wanted to attend that, you know, that we would talk about that prior to, because I think that you would run into a violation of open meetings if there's actually deliberation going on of the issues. Because one thing that the Public Information Board, they, they talked about purely social instances where you can have form there, and that's okay. And they talked about ministerial instances as well. But if it's a meeting going on and there's actually deliberation and policy being formed, and even if only two members are officially there, if a third member enters the room, even if they're not part of that discussion, it would be an open meetings violation if that's not posted. It's similar to, you can't have three supervisors go to lunch, not posted as a meeting, only two of them talk, it'd be okay.
Unless it's social, just...
Right, if you're talking about county business, then it would have to be a meeting. If it's social, that's okay.
Yeah.
Right.
And I would say that it'd be incumbent, I know if I was chairing that committee, I would cancel the committee if a third supervisor came because that's exactly what happened this last week when there was no posting, where we know that it's going to be a clear violation. I think it's incumbent to say, simply not hold the meeting. I would like to clarify that the committees have been very, I think, almost evenly spread. So just to respond to...
I disagree with that, but that's just, we look at it two different ways.
Well, I, I can show the numbers, and I can bring those back next week to show that the, the statement on all the committee work is done by three supervisors is not true.
A majority of, that's just my opinion. And, and we can discuss that after the meeting, you and I, I'd be more than happy to.
And, and again, I'll bring those numbers back, and then the public can decide. But the, I think it's very important that if you have two members, let's say WCICC, and if I say, I'm going to show up to that meeting, and I'm going to have a quorum here unannounced because I feel it's my right, I don't think that respects the, the process. And I think it puts those other members in a very untenable position because it's asking them to, to clearly violate something that's not a gray area.
And I guess when I read it, so I'm glad I talked to you about it right now because I read it as, as being much more gray. I thought, oh, man, I'm just as confused now almost as before we got the information. So, okay, that's what I, I just wanted to bring that up because as, as I was reading it, I thought, well, sometimes I may need to get there. So I now understand that if I feel like I need information, I'm going to trust that you will post a meeting as a Board of Supervisors meeting, and you would respect maybe that I might need to go and get some direct information. And I guess that's your choice, but that would be, because I'm going to ask you one here pretty soon on a non-controversial meeting that, that I think I need to be at, so.
And I, and I'm absolutely going to concur with you on that.
We talked about last night, so.
I just want to add to that, as I was drawing up the amendment, and after I got the information from the information board, I had already presented that amendment last week, but after I read that and talked about that, did raise a concern in my mind is that there isn't a provision, the only provision in the bylaw for calling a special meeting is... is left to the chairperson or the vice-chairperson in his absence. And it doesn't allow for any minority membership to request a special meeting. For if someone wants to attend one of those meetings, it is left up to the chairperson or the vice-chair of that person. So, that was one of the things that I considered after the fact, after I got that information from the Information Board. Just wanted to call that to your attention.
Well, just to clarify, Pat, someone other than the vice-chair or the chair could request that the chair call a meeting, but ultimately, it's up to the chair whether the meeting is called or not.
Right. But there isn't a provision in the bylaws for that, but you could do that. You're right.
And the Public Information Board email or letter was pretty, it did restate a lot of quotes, and as I read it, just gave the onus to the county attorney's office. And so, I'm most interested in what Mr. Widman has to say about these bylaws.
Joshua, could you clarify, I mean, do you agree with what I said, that it isn't in the bylaws, but they still could do it? Or do you think the bylaws allows for it?
No, I don't think that any member of the board can call a meeting based on the current bylaws. They can, any member of the board could request that the chairman call a meeting. I think that you would, you could potentially, I think it makes sense to have someone have the final say as to whether a meeting is called or not. I think it makes sense for that to rest with the chairman or the vice-chairman in his absence. If, you know, if a supervisor requests a meeting be called and it's not, you know, they certainly can make the public aware at a Board of Supervisors' meeting after that. But I think that that's a duty that should sit with the, with the chair as far as the discretion.
And I wonder if that's not already in, "The Chairperson shall set the tentative agenda for all meetings of the board." That's not implicit in there already.
Right. And, I mean, by specifying who it is that can call a meeting.
It's just the chair. Don't worry about it. So, we have a motion and a second and further discussion. Mr. Clausen.
Yeah. I don't know if I agree with the county attorney or not. I might agree with Pat a little bit, but it does not protect the minority in any way, shape, or form.
I don't understand what the minority is. We have a majority of Democrats on the board, for one.
Well, the votes are due to every, on any controversial issue. And if you want to go back and start checking, I'd be happy to do it with you.
What would the, what would you like as a quote-unquote minority member? I mean, what would?
I just want to clarify, when I said minority, that it's not talking about partisan. It is when you talk about Robert's Rules of Order, when they talk about the minority, protecting the minority. It's not partisan. It's minority membership of the board who opposes the majority of things. But I think that is misspoke, is that... I'm not, I don't have a vote. I'm just talking.
I've had my say, so, and it's not going to change anything, but I'm not going to vote for this.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, there's no way that I could. And as far as meetings are concerned, I'll have to agree with Mrs. Smith. If there's a meeting that I think I should be at, I'm going to do what this board has done on a number of occasions. I'm going to ask for forgiveness, not for permission. So, that's where I'm at.
Joshua, again, sorry, but on the, I thought what you said and what I read in the Information Board is that, in that situation, is that, in the case law they were talking about, is that it was okay for, you know, the majority to be there if one wasn't participating, but you were perilously close, or whatever the language was, of violating the law. And so, if Mr. Clausen or Smith talks about going to a meeting and not participating, is that you do so at your peril?
Well, and I don't think it respects process. I don't think it's very respectful of, if I say, "I'm going to go to this committee meeting, and I know that there's going to be a quorum, because I feel like it, and I'll ask for forgiveness, even though I know it's openly violating Chapter 21." I'm going to do it anyway. I mean, that will be both of your choices as elected officials, whether or not to have those who are coming from the outside, maybe a historical committee, maybe another one disbanded. People will try to reschedule this at another time where we can respect the law. But that, I guess every member has to answer to the electorate, and by his or her conduct, so.
And to answer Pat's question, in the information that the Public Information Board provided, they focused a lot on the exceptions to what constitutes a public meeting. And they talked about the social exception and the ministerial exceptions. So, in either of those instances, if it's a purely social gathering, or if it's ministerial, it doesn't have to be posted as a meeting at all, because it doesn't meet the definition of a meeting. And these, I think it's a different situation, a different scenario, when it's a committee of the board or another one of these groups that has it posted as a public meeting specifically, because they're going to be deliberating and acting on county business. And when a third supervisor comes, then you have a quorum, and you have a meeting, and that's a clear violation. So, we're kind of talking about two different things. If we're saying, there is a gray area between what can be ministerial versus when you cross the line to deliberation and action. But if it's something where it's a committee that's, you know, they're tasked with coming up with policy and making a recommendation, it's clear that that's not ministerial, and that would be a clear violation.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion carries four to one.
Yep, four to one. I'll just do what I need to do, I guess.
Item 17, Board of Supervisors, Matthew Ung. This is item A, contrasting the Sioux Rivers and formal mediation committee with formal mediation per the 28E agreement. This is an action item. Supervisor Ung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a challenge to find a appropriate title for this item, and also to summarize the events of the last few weeks within a couple days of this meeting, because there was an instance where Supervisor Munson and I could not participate in informal mediation. And I think I'll just read my executive summary and go from there. Woodbury County was placed in the untenable position of withdrawing from Sioux Rivers' informal mediation committee today, because the meeting was not publicly posted, as requested by Woodbury County six days ago. Less than 24 hours before the meeting, mediation committee members were provided by CEO Shane Walter with a resolution to hold meeting as closed, per the advice of the regional attorney, to be signed by the members of the committee on the day of the meeting. I was confused how such a resolution could be properly voted upon if a public meeting without public notice was not already happening. So, we were going to vote on signing, signing a resolution outside of there being a meeting. And again, I was confused how that was possible. Woodbury County's legal counsel advised us, outside legal counsel advised us not to participate under such circumstances, and later, the internal legal counsel, the same recommendation. So, I attempted to notify the region reps, the two other supervisors with Sioux and Plymouth County. We got ahold of one, who turned around, weren't able to get ahold of the other one. Supervisor Munson and I stayed until 9:30, just to deliver the news that we could not meet, in case they did show up. But that didn't happen, so we simply left, and I went to write this item. I notified Chairman Taylor that despite Woodbury County's attempt to acquiesce to the region, the 28E notes that a quorum of the Sioux Rivers Governance Board is three members, because it's a six-member board. So, two is the maximum number that can meet without public notice. Because there was no meeting notice published, this conflicts with the four Governance Board members, both parties assumed to be on this committee. In order to avoid an open meetings law violation, I plan to excuse myself before the meeting could begin, but the Sioux and Plymouth County supervisors did not show up, so that step was not necessary. Mediation per the 28E agreement does not comport with what took place today. I am requesting further direction. And I've also supplied further clarification. Chairman Taylor, you asked, or you reached out to get the precise motion made at the region meeting back in July. So, I listened to the recording and typed it out for the board to read, as well as some comments made at the board meeting, and the options that the region is considering against Woodbury County, including injunction, declaratory judgment, declaring leases void, eventually a lawsuit against Woodbury County. My recommendation is, if the Woodbury County Board is to participate in mediation, it should not be, quote, "informal," what this board approved last week. And again, in a good faith effort to participate, because this has created problems. And the problem is, right after we approved that, I emailed the members of the committee and the CEO, asking for public posting of this meeting if it was appropriate. That was not received in time. And as you'll see in the next agenda item, it was actually improperly posted. So, it's created problems. I'm not very optimistic about rescheduling it under the same circumstances, because this should have been a very, very, this is a pre-formal mediation committee meeting, and we couldn't even all get together to discuss what we're going to discuss. Per the 28E, a mediation committee itself mediates disputes between two other parties. I've read the 28E many times, and there's two, there's two ways to deal with disputes. One is if there's a disagreement between two external parties, the mediation committee would mediate that. But if there's a dispute between the members of the board, and the CEO, and the member counties, which is certainly what's taking place, even with a majority of one county in disagreement with the members of the region, you don't have a mediation committee of the same people to go into a separate room and discuss what you discussed in the other room. And that's what I was, I wasn't in support of creating this at the region level, and that's one of the questions was, is it going to be the same people? And it was. The proper way, I believe, in the 28E is to, if you're going to go down the road of mediation to avoid arbitration, then you want to do it according to the 28E, which you can see under recommendation. If we desire mediation, it should be conducted pursuant to Iowa code. And obviously, a mediator is a third impartial party, such as a judge, that both parties would agree upon. But this was kind of a sloppy arrangement, and so, I don't, I didn't want to lay out one single proposed motion, because we have to grapple with where we want to go from here. The last email I received from the CEO was, "Just let us know what you intend to do." And because Woodbury County's representatives didn't want to form this mediation committee of the same people to discuss the same issue, again, there's a few options here. We could, we could move to decide to begin actual mediation following the 28E, and thereby Iowa code, or we could move to defer until the formal request for formal mediation is made by Sioux Rivers at the next meeting in August, or we could simply defer until we receive further counsel. Because the counsel I received on this was pretty hurried in the morning. I didn't want to break an open meetings law. I didn't want to attend a meeting. I shouldn't. I was trying to communicate with other supervisors. I was leaving voicemails and hearing voicemails from our attorney. And it's just, it shouldn't be so hard to get a meeting posted a week ahead of time, if it's really an issue of suing a member county within a couple weeks. And you can see in the backup, a recommendation that we not attend. I would, that's what I have for now. I kind of opened it.
Can I just add one thing, Supervisor Ung?
Yeah.
One of the things that I asked in trying to discern, what was the exact motion that was made? What does this informal mediation mean? Because mediation is pretty clearly laid out in Iowa code, what that means. It's not, hey, let's get together and try to work it out over, you know, it provides for specific things pursuant to Chapter 679(c). And the response that I received was, this is a step before formal mediation. And so, I thought that was good news, meaning that we're not just going to jump to litigation, that they understand that they go from one step to formal mediation. My sense would be that if it is the will of the Sioux Rivers region to engage in that, then we need to wait until they engage us in that, and not try to cobble together something that I don't think Iowa code allows for, informal mediation, without a mediator. I mean, it's just not, doesn't exist. I think we can still be polite and respectful, and have a good meeting of the minds with having an actual mediator, and following the provisions laid out in Iowa code. That's my sense.
Well, this whole issue is off the track. They should be talking about services to the citizens of the counties, instead of whose space it is, and who has charge of it, and who can run it. And at the last meeting, we heard, "Oh, my gosh, we feel threatened, and we don't feel safe, because Kenny comes into our area, and that Veterans Affairs has come into our area and gone through our stuff." That is not true. That is absolutely not true. Those people have not gone in. Kenny can go into any building he wants to. He's in charge of all the county buildings, and if he just happens to walk into the area, too bad. And that goes all the way through every building. Veterans Affairs, what do they care? They're not going over there and going through stuff. You know, we're making big piles of stuff over nothing, when we ought to be talking about services. I think we need to wait until we get to the public, or to the formal hearing, and do it right. I felt, you want to talk about threatened, I felt very threatened yesterday morning with very, I mean, bad legal advice from the regional attorney on 21.5. It was bad advice. Even I knew that, and I'm not an attorney. I don't know. I kind of felt like we were getting set up into something that we should not be going into, and thank God, I got called off.
Well, it follows a trend of, the resolution actually said pursuant to the motion made July 18th, this meeting August 1st is okay. It sort of follows the trend Supervisor Munson and I have seen from the region of, or the regional attorney, I should say, that motions made previously actually mean something that you designate later on. And obviously, there is a disagreement between both of our legal councils from Woodbury County's side and the regional attorney. And I think if you are invested in the long-term health of the region, you would want to make sure that when supervisors ask, just to stay on the right side of the rules, that you would respond in a timely fashion, or at least have already thought about that, because anyone knows four out of six is a quorum. But that's what was proposed at the last region meeting.
Other thoughts or discussion?
How would, just an open question, how should the board, or how should the liaisons communicate any particular course of action back to the region? Because I don't think the other two are happy that we weren't able to meet, but at the same time, didn't ask for a rescheduling.
I would think that we would say that it is not the intention for us to engage or depress home the point of formal mediation. However, if that is the will of the region, then the steps for formal mediation have to be carried out. be carried out. That way, we're not asking, hey, we want to go to mediation, because I don't think mediation's even appropriate in this instance. However, if the ball is in their court and they say, well, by golly, we're going to mediate, then let's do it the right way so that all the proper protocols are followed and we can all still be above board and respectful and everything else, but do it the right way. I just think that's the safest way.
I do, too.
We can certainly ask for further legal counsel and relay that to the region.
But I don't know if we need any further counsel than that. I mean, I think satisfactory to know that we can communicate back. I'd be willing to do so, that on behalf of this board, if they intend to engage in mediation, there's provisions laid out, we stand ready to follow those. I think just keeping it general like that. I mean, I defer to Joshua if you have anything that you want to steer us off the ledge. Sorry to make some metaphors, but...
Yeah. No, I think that that makes sense. I mean, essentially, the request to try to come to a resolution of this matter is coming from the region. And I think that there's questions that haven't been answered as far as the informal mediation. You know, one is whether that's the proper procedure under the 2080 agreement, and then whether it can be, if they can do the informal mediation, what that would look like. Because the issue for the meeting yesterday, not only was there the insufficient posting ahead of time, but the region attorney hasn't identified which exception to open meetings law that allows for a closed session they plan to go in under. And, you know, I'm not the one advising the region, but there's not an exception that jumps out to me as something that you'd be able to go in under.
Is 679(c) something, does formal mediation allow for that? Or would this be, I'm just curious, I really don't know.
Right. Probably the way that the mediation would be set up is that there would be representatives from each of the parties involved. So you probably wouldn't have a quorum at that point, so it wouldn't be something that would be in a public meeting, but it wouldn't be required to be, because you wouldn't have a quorum. But it, I mean, it can be set up in different ways, and the statute is pretty, you know, lays out the steps as far as how you follow the process.
Joshua, would that mean that down the road, Woodbury County could only designate one, and the region could only designate one supervisor?
Potentially. I mean, we'd cross that bridge when we got there, but, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to be cognizant of these issues as they're setting up what it's going to look like.
So Roger Clausen?
I'm not on that committee. This thing has gotten way out of hand. I don't know how to bring it back in. I'm powered to...
Larry, part of the problem is you.
Mr. Munson?
Yes, Mr. Clausen.
Why don't you not interrupt somebody if you've got something to say?
Go right ahead.
Jump right in when I'm finished. You've got three counties involved. If you want one person from each county, that would not be a quorum.
But you'd still be at three is the problem.
Well, yeah, but you've got six, so you'd be at half. So let's say the chairman, which they tried to get to begin with, and one supervisor from Plymouth and one from Sioux, and I think that's what they have now, and I think they did Woodbury County courtesy by saying, you know, send two. Maybe they didn't. Maybe there's an ulterior motive here I can't figure out. I think what they're trying to do is resolve this without going through formalities. And you don't have enough people there to, you know, guarantee what they decide is going to float, because it has to come back to the various boards. So getting together, I don't see any problem in it, if it can, if the job can be done.
Well, according to the...
Want to go to formal mediation, you know, I guess that's the route to go.
Well, Joshua, you have a look in your eye like you want to say something?
I don't think that the request for formal mediation should come from this board. I think it's kind of, at this point, we should look to them as far as how they want to proceed. And, you know, if it's the informal route, then we need to agree on what that looks like, you know, if it's even something that we can do and still comply with open meetings law. If it's the formal mediation, then, you know, we just, we need to make sure that we set it up in a way that it can be successful and we don't, I mean, we're kind of getting bogged down in a side issue. And we have an action, you know, the discussions as far as, okay, resolving the issue with the building, you know, aren't taking place, because we have the side issue.
I agree with that. So what I'm hearing is you're just going to go back to the next region meeting and work it out there. Is that right? On which process you're going to use?
What I just heard Joshua say is that we should maybe ask the region to go to a formal mediation.
Or, that's what I heard.
Would be their recommendation.
Can we just request, if it's the will of this board, to not engage in informal mediation that we don't see provisions for within the 2080, and that doesn't seem to be laid out? Because that's the problem with this, right? And it's nobody's fault, and I'm not casting stones at them, but the informal mediation, there's no rules. There's no mediator, there's no, I mean, and so you're sort of cobbling that together rather than going through the formal mediation process. We're not requesting it, but if they do seek to go in mediation, it needs to be laid out per the 2080 and then...
Maybe mediation's the wrong word. Maybe they just want to get together and try and work it out in an informal discussion. That's what I, I mean, that's what I, on the outside, looking, you know, looking from the outside, that's what it seems like to me. It got screwed up somehow because of the meeting notice, but if the intent, if all the parties aren't going to come together with good intent, it's probably not going to matter anyway. So, and you may need a mediator, because when I hear the attitudes, and maybe they have the same attitude, too, I don't know. I only hear our representatives, it doesn't sound good to me. I mean, there seems to be anger, there's, I don't know, it may take a third party, but let them decide and go back and, you know, if we can't play nice with others, then maybe that's just the way it's going to have to go. But they get to decide it. So I don't, I didn't hear that. I heard if you want to get together to talk about it, you could talk about it, but...
Well, I think it's fair to make the wishes of this board known to them as far as what it looks like.
But my wish would be not probably the same as their wish, to work it out informally if possible. That's my wish.
I don't think Joshua legally, let's just say they sent me of all people, if I went, that I'd have the authority to say, well, we'll come, we'll split the difference. You want $2,400 or $1,600, and we wanted one, and we'll end up at 800. I don't believe that legally, I have the authority to do that in this informal, not provisioned for in Iowa code discussion. Wouldn't that be your, I mean, I couldn't go and start negotiating an informal mediation with no mediator there, and it would have to come back before this board anyway.
Right, it would have to come back before each of the boards. So...
But that's more than what we've been able to come back with before. Even if you come back with a number of 800, we haven't had any kind of number come back. There's been, it's been open-ended. Even that's progress. Even if, you know, you can't make the decision, but even if you get into it and that's what you tree decide on, if that's the way it comes back, then it does come back here and the other two boards. That's just still progress.
And I guess my only question is, why couldn't that same thing happen during having a good mediator there and following provisions that are clearly laid out? I don't understand why they can still take place.
And I think there were informal discussions via email that Chairman Taylor had with the CEO of the region at one point. And I think that there's a legitimate question as to whether it's a good-faith attempt to resolve the issue, or if they're just checking off boxes as far as the 2080 says you have to go through these steps before you can go to litigation. And arbitration, mediation and arbitration are clearly set out. So to me, when the resolution that the region passed said, we're going to do this informal mediation, or whatever they called it, and they said it has to take place within a week, to me, that short of a timeframe isn't realistic. So, or whatever that's worth.
I concur. So where are we at?
We're all angry.
I'm not angry.
There are a couple of us, apparently.
I would move that the chairman be authorized to communicate to the region that informal mediation is not the route to go. While we do not seek to be in mediation at all, should Sioux Rivers region wish to go in that direction, that mediation per Chapter 679(c) of the Iowa code needs to be followed. That would be my motion.
Second.
Get all that, and we have a motion and a second is our discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion carries three to two. I will respectfully, politely craft that email. I will share it with everyone in our next meeting. Supervisor Rong, on 17B, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
The only reason why this is a separate item is because irrespective of this item, the previous item would have been submitted. But this is just to keep the board up to date on how Woodbury County reacted to Representatives Supervisor Munson and I, and what actually took place. There was apparently a communication lapse within Sioux Rivers leading to improper posting of the informal mediation. 9:30 a.m. meeting on Monday, the meeting was, in effect, canceled by email requesting the notice to be brought down at 9:10. The issue was that I reached out to Shane to see why there was seemingly a discrepancy. I don't think he had any ill intent. I do think he did his best to notify, but for whatever reason, the actual posting of the meeting did not take place until 52 minutes before the meeting was to take place. And before that, courthouse security notified the board office that someone had taped a meeting to the glass, a little bit more than 52 minutes ahead of the meeting. So I'm not sure why there was such a scurry on the particular day. I think it had something to do with the legal counsel requesting a resolution that would say is okay. And obviously, if you're going to meet, you want to have a meeting notice somewhere in the building, but I don't think it was really taken as seriously as it should have been. I included a couple of emails to the board office saying, put it up, take it down. The first time the board office was notified of that, of course, was Monday. And then the communication between the CEO and I, that is simply a recording of what happened, and all I'm doing is relaying it.
Thank you very much. Item 18, Chairman's Report. I apologize for the length. I'm just, I'm trying to keep everybody as informed as possible on anything that goes on through the week. So first off, honoring law enforcement. August 10th, I was notified from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., I'll have a barbecue Sioux City Police Department parking lot, and want to let everybody know, as all supervisors, I assume elected officials and the public are invited in order to honor law enforcement. All that they do, I think that's a sign of good health in a community, is that our community is willing to do so, and we don't have some of the same issues that some other communities are currently facing. So thank you all for what you do. Item B, discussions concerning tax abatement and TIF policy. We have some discussion that's going on between our Economic Development Director, Sergeant Bluff, myself, on Sergeant Bluff's ability within their TIF district to offer tax abatement, upon which we believe that we would be ultimately paid back through something like the Dogwood Trail project. All I'm doing with this is alerting you that there are discussions. We've asked for an opinion from Bob Johnston on what is doable and not doable, and Dennis Butler's been a part of this discussion as well. Can the city exempt on its own, or can they also obligate the county to exempt its portion of the taxes as well? No opinions, and nothing's been communicated to Sergeant Bluff. We're simply exploring that with this first project.
I have a question. If the city of Sergeant Bluff is allowed to give tax abatements for their portion, how do they repay their loan?
It's a great question.
Has that been broached, or...
That's part and parcel of raising the issue. So I think the response may be, well, that would only be for three years at 100%, or they're stepped in over 10, depending on what was offered. But I think it's a fair question and a discussion to have. Anything else on that? Item C, juvenile detention and BIA contracts. Mark Olson has done a good job of keeping me up to date, that it is on their end that they have been slow in the renewal of the contract, and so we have not been able to receive residents from BIA for some time. He did inform me today that FY '16, we had about $60,000 to $70,000 more than was anticipated, so that's the good news. The bad news is we haven't been able to otherwise house residents until those contracts are ratified. He told them that I was looking into it, that we are very concerned, and trying to put the pressure on, and believe that those contracts will be ratified soon. They went through some displacement and a new person doing the contracts. Keeping you up to date on that. Item D, the historical committee meeting update. Originally, this was a 10 o'clock meeting. Supervisor Munson and myself sit on this particular committee. However, we all agreed that Supervisors Smith and Ung would be doing the planning for the 100th anniversary of the courthouse. So in order to not walk right back into having a quorum, my original impetus was to go from 10:00 to 10:45, which is about the time that I believe that that committee is going to need to hear of everything that's happening here, and get updates, and also be able to give input, and then from 10:45 to 11:15, have the discussion about the 100th anniversary. Since that time, I've decided, Supervisor Smith and I talked, to just go ahead and post that as a special meeting. What I would ask, and it's actually, and I hope this is understood, from the 10:45 to 11:15, legally, can we all be there? Sure. I believe it's the role of these two supervisors, however, to work out this 100th anniversary and not for others to stay around. Again, can you? Sure. But I think we tasked them, because we trusted them to do a good job with it, and so it will be an open meeting.
I, if you want to stay, that's great. I have no problem with it.
Sure.
More ideas are better. So as long as it's posted, it may be a good thing if more of us are there. We're all going to be involved in it, so...
And ironically, I will be, I won't be at this particular meeting, so there may be four of you. So 10 o'clock, that will be posted. I think Karen has that ready to go for tomorrow morning. Item E, condolences to the City of Lawton on the passing of Mayor Rick Shorg. There's a card, we've signed it, we'll send that. Sueland Initiative Steering Committee update. Boy, there's a lot going on. Passed since 2014, $2.7 billion. A lot of that CF, but a lot of it's also a great growth, 1,734 new permanent jobs, and then $100 million investment in Royal Canin, which is a pet food company. Mars Inc. is actually the parent company. They've invested $1 billion nationally, 30,000 new employees nationally. This is quality pet food. And I'm telling you that because they have 177 formulas, and they even test it themselves, and they're big believers that...
Oh, no. Come on.
If you put on a little bit of lettuce and spinach, that this stuff is... If you put, if you put on a little bit of lettuce and spinach, that this stuff is, is really that, that good. They even have pet-specific, uh, things, urinary tract infection, certain pet foods, it's state-of-the-art.
Are you hungry?
I mean, they really, uh, they're, they're very, very impressive, so.
You can have my share.
Well, I, I may rather be a taste tester at Wells, but if that falls through, um, I'll go there. So, I just wanted to say that because I think it impacts our county. How so? Even though it's a North Sioux, we're away from the parochialism and the territorial. I think we're all in agreement that local option sales tax and everything else, um, all our communities can go in the same directions.
That is a huge deal.
Yeah. Well, between CF, AGP, Big Ox, Wells, Baumgarres, Richardson, um, Cloverleaf Cold Storage, I think things are really happening around the area. So, that's great. And then finally, uh, initial discussion of Emergency Management Coordinator replacement with Sheriff Dave Drew. Matthew and I sat down and heard an idea that the sheriff is, uh, discussing. And, I don't know if you wanna say anything, you're sheriff, but basically, it was that there may be able to be a, a deputy in a position that would oversee that. I don't wanna put you on the spot here, but I think I just did. But I thought once hearing it, I wanted the rest of the board to, to hear what may go in front of the Emergency Management Commission.
Yeah, we were exploring some options and I wanted to make, um, the EM Commission aware and, uh, and the board, couple members. And I, I just don't think that direction that we had talked about earlier, we, we may proceed with. And that was if I could put a full-time person in that spot, uh, because of the salary and that, we could hire someone and we'd still actually save money. But I, I haven't heard back from Homeland Security and, uh, the person that I thought might be a fit for it, I don't think he qualifies. He does years of experience, but not the educational part, so. Even though I think his years of experience trump what they may require as an education, I don't wanna lose the $39,000. So, I'm not gonna sit and argue about it, so. We'll just probably proceed as we would for any applicant.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff. We are now then to, so hard to replace, Michelle. Uh, item 19, reports on committee meetings.
I had a good one. Last Wednesday, the Cherokee Mental Health Institute Advisory Committee met. They are struggling, continually struggling as all state agencies. They have unions that, um, they negotiate with every year. They get a percentage of increase and the state refuses to give a dime of that increase. So, the salaries go up and their budget stays exactly the same. And this has gone on for years and it's creating a, a, a real problem in budgeting. However, um, it's interesting comparison between the third quarter of 15 and the third quarter of 16 in admissions. 15, they admitted 136 and in 16, they admitted 127. Now, what does that mean? That means that the average length of stay has gone from, um... Well, it's up, it's up dramatically in the number of days each patient stays. They're getting more difficult cases. They're getting cases that, uh, probably are not appropriate. There's some legal folks that figured out, uh, they can go to a judge and get a committal for substance abuse at Cherokee, which is totally inappropriate. But the judge orders it, so they have to take them. They, uh, have been working very hard to try to cut those days down. The average length of stay for the kids is phenomenal. They turn them over really fast. The other part of that is called CUSO, which is a sex offender, uh, component. They have 101, uh, sex offenders in the unit and four that are outside placed. There's a national lawsuit, uh, in the works questioning whether the courts have the right to place those folks on a voluntary, involuntary committal as sex offenders, which if that happens, could be very interesting. They do have a very specific five-step program, which all the patients know that when they get to five, they can start going out, working, coming back, maybe get an apartment, so on. To the point where they are, uh, released probably with monitoring. That has the potential, what do they call it? The, the keeper list. In the prisons, there are 20 inmates this year and 20 inmates next year that qualify for CUSO. So, they could go from 101 to 140 to 50 in a couple of years with no budget. They would have to completely remodel a unit to house that many people. And it's an issue. But they're struggling along. A lot of retirement, so there's a lot of people over there that have been working there for decades. That's all I got.
Right, other committee reports. We will move on to citizen concerns. Any concerned citizens? Yes. You are a citizen. And a scholar.
I want, I wanna be brief. But I, I just thought it would, because I, I know we have the quarterly or monthly meeting with all the elected officials and department heads. And you put out a, uh, a minutes. Karen, you put that out and I appreciate it. But we got a letter that I thought was worthy of the board to hear. So, I'll try to, uh, I'll try to make it through it. But, you know, obviously Dallas and all these incidents that happened, I get letters. And 90% of them, I open them and, um, they're always good, but it's always that 10%, you got a few. But everywhere I think law enforcement has gone over the last few months, they have, um, people have been gracious. From the time I went down to Dallas with Major Stallman and a quick 24-hour turnaround, the people in Dallas, all the way home, were very good. And, uh, so this lady felt compelled to send this letter and I, I, I'm gonna try to share it with you. And I, I think back reading when Mrs. Hansen, my third grade teacher, read to me, sometimes I drift off, so please don't. I know with things going on in this country regarding law enforcement, that people only tend to focus on the negative. Therefore, I would like to, um, tell you of the positive incident with one of your officers that literally changed a life. This is a story of a deputy going above and beyond. And I'm sure serving papers is, uh, among one of the deputy's least favorite jobs. I'm sure they see people in the worst of times, such as my case. My husband had been sick for the last several years and he was on, uh, transplant for a new organ. And over the course of the past several years, he's had, uh, three surgeries and, uh, cancer scare. My husband was in his 50s when this started. Medical bills, travel costs and, uh, going to the medical center have been mounting. We tried to make arrangements as best we can and pay what we can. I had to leave my job because the flexibility had changed. It became harder and harder to get time off with him and drive to appointments as well as other reasons. In November, or in early, uh, part of, uh, November last year, my husband had his third surgery. And while he was in the hospital, we missed a payment on doctor bills. The law office that garnished my husband's wages in December for several hundred dollars and in January for several hundred dollars, this left us in a very bad place trying to get by and selling what we could, even our wedding rings, to make ends meet. It was devastating, to, uh, to say the least. We had hung on. And, uh, my husband's, uh, condition, conditions improved. And now, uh, everything though seemed somewhat hopeless because of this devastating bills that we had to pay. Here's where your deputy comes in. Early early this year, both garnishments came to our house and to serve papers. Walking out that door, I had been on the phone earlier trying desperately to get a loan to pay the power bill. The bank had said we had too much medical debt. I had been trying to figure out a way to keep things together and how to get back from all these garnishments. It was a very dark place and everything just seemed hopeless. Deputy Rose approached my house. I managed to get out, uh, some words before bursting into tears. I looked at the paper and said, more doctor bills. As he was standing with me, listening to me sob, my whole story came out and he listened. Told me he knew we were good people. And that we were trying very hard. And he wanted to assure us that we don't think anything bad of them. I told him that the garnishments that we had to go for, for help, he told me most of the papers, uh, served were for medical bills. I stood sobbing on my porch and he said he was going to his car to make some calls. Sure enough, he came back, uh, with a list of people to call. At that moment, Deputy Rose gave me something back that I had lost for a long time. He gave me hope. Treated me with kindness and dignity. He made me feel important for the first time in months. And I felt that we could make it. And we did. Are things perfect? No, we still struggle sometimes, but things will continue to get better financially and hopefully medically. He could have just read the papers that day and went and bought his business. But he cared, he went above and beyond without a doubt. His positive actions created a change in my, in me and my attitude. Please thank him for his efforts. I commend him for what he has done, his kindness and his wonders. Thank him for his sincere effort to make a better day. That's what deputies do every day. We change people's tires, we help people. Deputy Rose is, uh, I can't take credit for Deputy Rose. Deputy Rose is a, a good man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Should we do a plaque for him?
We definitely recognize, uh, what our law enforcement does and how they touch lives every day. And appreciate the example of doing just so in this instance. So, thank you very much for sharing that. And please, on behalf of our board, um, thank him until the time that we can maybe more formally do so as a body. So, thank you very much. Any other citizen concerns to come before this board? It's a good way to, to end the evening then. And so, with that, lots of journey.